Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to open the meeting to the, oh my gosh, March 22nd, many in turn for a meeting. I'd like everyone to stand and pledge their allegiance. Pledge their allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart. Thank you very much. The public notices being pursuant to the opening of the meeting as been given by the borough clerk in the following manner. Posted on the bulletin board in the borough clerk's office, an email to the retrospect and the courier post. We have roll call, please.
Chairwoman Clinton.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Bush.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Ms. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Boisozon.
President.
Mayor is excused. Councilman, Councilman Robin Stein is excused.
Ms. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Walker. She's here, she's here. Mr. Missoli.
President.
Mr. Rowan is on the way.
Mr. Bach.
Yes.
We'll make an announcement on the record when Mr. Rowan arrives. We can request the approval of the minutes of the last month's meeting.
Motion.
Anyone have any questions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this point in time, I just want to let Mr. Bach make an announcement.
Sure, that the, I don't know the exact order. On behalf of the board, anyone here for the ABA Realty 705, 707 East Clemmons Bridge Road, the applicant prematurely sent out notices that they were to be heard this evening, they are not going to be on tonight's agenda. So, ABA Realty 705, 707 East Clemmons Bridge Road, they asked for a continuance of their notice, I would recommend against that, Mayor. Mayor, sorry, I'm promoting you, I'm promoting you. So, I would recommend that the board not continue notice and require the applicant to re-note for the hearing of which they're going to be heard. So, if anybody's here, that will be heard today and a new notice will be required of the applicant for when they would appear before the planning board.
Do you have any questions on that? Okay.
Will we notify?
Yes.
Okay, there is a drawing in the, in the office of the-
Yes, so there are applicant, application materials that are submitted that are on file with the Borough Planning Board Secretary, which is also our Borough Clerk.
Can I, can I provide it now even though there is nothing, nothing has been being-
It's a submitted application.
Correct.
If it's submitted application, you're allowed anybody to come in and take a look at it.
Okay, guys, thank you very much, have a nice evening.
And, and Madam Chair, I've just recommended that we take a recess.
Yes, exactly.
Very good.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll adjourn the meeting and recess at 7:15.
At a Wednesday the first.
Okay. No, you can use mine.
Oh, okay, good. I've used mine a lot.
And I emailed it to you too.
We're going to reopen the meeting at 7:35 and we're going to pull on the record that our solicitor, Mr. David Rowan, is now present and-
And I'm, I'm still a lawyer with jeans on. Counselor, come on up, swear your folks in.
We don't have any old business.
Yeah, we got old business.
Oh, we got, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, we already did the minutes, so the next thing is, do we have any old business to go over? Under new business, we have application 22-12, Mr. Rowan.
Okay, this is the continuing matter, the site plan application for 101E 9th Avenue. And Counselor, may I have your appearance?
Good evening, and I'm the board for the record, my name is Mike Floyd, I'm an attorney with Archer and Reiner, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Charah Hospitality LLC, which has submitted an application for D2 use experience approval and preliminary final site plan approval for property located at 101 East 9th Avenue and identified as block 135, block 31 on the Borough's official tax max. With me this evening, we have four witnesses. We have Lieutenant Patel from the hat of Charah Hospitality. Mr. Patel is the co-owner and manager of the hotel. We also have our project engineer of record, Kevin Shelley, Short Point Engineering. We also have with us this evening our architect of record, Michael Bush, Studio 43D. And last but not least, we have Joseph Mancini with Tri-State Engineering Survey, our planner of record, and he will be doing the proofing of the record in support of the requested D2 use experience approval. I've also passed out a written exhibit list to help guide tonight's presentation, and we do have four exhibits that we will be presenting. Exhibit A1 is an aerial photograph of the property and its surrounding uses. Exhibit A2 is the rendering of the site plan that was submitted with this application. And then Exhibit A3 are the conceptual floor plans and renderings of this expansion of the hotel. And if need be, we do have the full set of the site plans to reference at Exhibit 4.
Okay, Mike, why don't we do a group squaring in here, one of the folks that are going to give testimony tonight, if you step forward, raise your right hand. Gentlemen, you saw only swear or affirm, the testimony you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate, best of your knowledge.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll, sorry, I said yes. Thank you. Mr. Wilson, is this a continuation, the notice was already, did you-
From last meeting, yes.
And the notice was proper, so we have to-
Well, I reviewed that last, for our last meeting, I believe there was a, yeah, applicant was missing that time, he was un-
Right, is that what I was saying?
Yeah.
Just for the record, I just want to let everybody know that we have a full quorum of seven up here that will be voting tonight. The three alternates will be able to participate in the Q and A, but they will not be able to vote this evening.
Thank you.
You're most welcome, sir.
So, the property is located in the special economic, excuse me, Special Economic Development Zone District, the SEB Zone District. This is a lawful, pre-existing, non-conform use. Hotels are not specifically permitted in this district. The more we're proposing is to take a two-story hotel and add a third story to it with 23 additional rooms. Because this is not a specifically permitted use in the Zone District, it does require D2 use experience approval, we're also proposing additional parking spaces outside of the hotel and other site improvements, landscaping, lighting, homeowner management, et cetera. So, in addition to D2 use experience approval, we are also seeking preliminary final site plan approval. I would like to make two announcements at the start before I bring up Lieutenant Patel, his fact testimony. Our site plans depicted a pool as an accessories to the hotel, and after feedback from, from the Borough and speaking with the, the board engineer, we're going to be eliminating that reference to the pool and the site plans, so that is no longer part of our application. And if at some point in the future the applicant decides to have a pool, we have to reappear before this board. So, if the, the board grants the request of relief this evening, we would raise a condition of approval to revise the site plans to eliminate any reference to the pool. The other housekeeping matter is that our notice and our application cited a total of 67 new rooms. There are 44 existing rooms on the first and second floor, and we're proposing 23 new rooms in the third floor. However, with your testimony from our engineer architect that built the expansion to the third floor, we're going to lose two rooms in the existing hotel. One is going to be created, one's going to be converted to a testicle and another one will be a conference room. So, we are looking at a total of 65 new rooms. With that being said, we are receipt of Mr. Bach's re-letter, we did submit a point-by-point response letter, and we are amenable to amended the site plans as requested by Mr. Bach, who will put testimony in with him this evening regarding operations, the plans and drawings.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
If I didn't receive the point-by-point response, I don't believe-
I would get that over here.
That's fine, and, you might, my life will be easier and everybody's likely, so you agree with all the conditions of our review?
Yes, we do.
And then there was one additional condition which was raised, which was sidewalks along the frontage. I don't know if we made that into the review or not, but it was-
We would agree to revise the plans to include the sidewalk along the frontage.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have extra copies of them here.
Thank you.
Another question, I'd like to grab Mr. Patel to address some of the operational questions that were raised in the review letter.
Certainly, thank you.
Lieutenant? Can you state your name again for the record and your position with Charah Hospitality and the days in?
I'm Lieutenant Patel, and like a caller, and my, my-
Thank you, Lieutenant, and when did you purchase the property?
June 2015.
And you've been continuously operating it since you purchased it in June 2015?
Yes.
What is your experience in general in the hotel and hospitality industry?
Almost like 24, 25 years.
So, as you heard by stating earlier, we're seeking a use experience approval and site plan approval, and we're going to try to address some of the comments that were raised in Mr. Bach's review letter regarding the operations. So, maybe just to start, can you confirm how many full-time employees you have on site for the hotel?
Four.
What is the breakdown of their job responsibilities?
Manager, general manager, and off the people.
Speak into the mic, please.
Yes, can you put your finger to the mic, you can hear.
So-
How many employees do you have, Mr. Patel?
I'm sorry, four, four employees.
Right, thank you.
And two managers, one, a general manager, and one to work the front desk.
That's right.
And then two housekeepers for, I'll say-
Duty and-
And breakfast duty.
Right.
Is there also a super on site?
Yes.
And that super is on site 24 hours a day, 7 days a week?
Yes.
We're asking for a use experience approval to raise the roof of the hotel and add 23 additional rooms. Can you talk about the peak seasons for the hotel and when they are and what those occupancy levels are?
The summer, like the summer, we have like a peak season that usually we do like more than 90%. Like weekends are like a 95% on summer. And the summer, weekends, mine is around 80%. And non-summer, we have, weekends are always like around 80%. And the weekends is like 65% on, like a picture time, on summer.
So, summer weekends are the busiest, usually 90%.
Summer weekends are long weekends.
And where do your typical guests come from?
Philly.
And what's their average length of stay?
Average stay, like two days, three days, four days, like that.
And why are you seeking right now the increase of 23 rooms?
So, now, like, it's like a market demand, we like, summer, we're very busy, and long weekends especially, and now we have like a small hotel, after, like the next door, that's that close. We have a lot, many points for like a group bookings, and mine is so small, so we cannot take the group booking at all, or weddings, or parties, like a game, or anything.
And funerals, weddings, group booking.
So, I think people who look for a bigger number of rooms, in that, because they can't keep their dining or something, it's a problem.
In terms of the turnpike in Ex-3, is this considered one of the busier hotels?
Mine is the busiest in the long-term factor, like, yeah, more than that, that Delmar Hotel.
So, based on your experience since 2015 operating the hotel, do you think there's an absolute need to increase the capacity of the hotel?
Yes, we do.
And what impacted the La Quinta Inn half when it closed? I'm sorry, what impacted the La Quinta Hotel Inn half when it closed?
After they closed, like mine is like so busy, and especially, before the La Quinta, they had like group booking, they were bigger hotel. But now they can eat, come at my hotel, and then we don't have any such rooms, so all we need is like more rooms so that we can take a group booking.
And based on your historical experience with the current 44 rooms in the hotel, you have more than sufficient parking?
Yes, it's like more than sufficient parking.
And with the additional parking lot that's being added, would that be more than sufficient to handle additional 23 rooms?
Easily, we have like filled with full parking, even, even now, even though we sell out all rooms, we have some parking space at here.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Thank you, sir. Any more from the board, any questions from this witness?
Just, maybe he just misspoke, but he said like 80, 90, I think, was he talking percentage, Mike?
80, 90% occupancy.
Oh, I thought he was saying 80 or 90.
Oh, no, no, no.
The summer, mine is like more than 95% or something like that, yeah. Some weekends, like some weekends, mine is like complete full.
95%.
They were all percentages.
Oh, okay.
So, summer weekends are generally specific to the hotels.
Right.
Usually 90 to 95% occupancy rates.
Got you.
I mean, like 95% of the 44 rooms are occupied, and then non-summer weekends are also very busy, 80, 85, 90%. So, we're talking about occupancy rates, not the number of-
No, I got you.
Are you, are you-
Any other questions from the board for this witness?
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Thank you. And, Madam Chair, Mr. Floyd, I did receive, I apologize, I moved my files, so I'll give you a copy back, I did receive the Archer response.
This is our next witness, Kevin Shelley, with Short Point Engineering. Kevin, before you start, you can again state your name for the record, plus your qualifications as a professional engineer in New Jersey.
Sure, my name is Kevin Shelley, S-H-E-L-L-Y, the owner of Short Point Engineering. I am a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey since 2012. My license is current and in their standing, certified on the various boards across the state, but I'm not in the pleasure of doing that. Can you plug this board in?
Well, that's it, Mr. Shelley, you recognize it as an expert in the field of-
Civil engineering. Absolutely.
Thank you. Kevin, if you could start with Exhibit A1, which is an aerial photograph of the property and its surrounding uses.
Sure, I'll just mark it as A1.
Can the members of the public see this? If you want to come on up, or if you, Kevin, if you could just tell it a little bit, so, you know, we want to make sure the public has the ability to see this. If you can't see it, folks, you're welcome to come on up.
It's a pretty straightforward exhibit, it's just an aerial exhibit, what the set looks like today. You'll see the property, which is located at 101 East 9th Avenue in the Special Economic Development Zone District. Property surrounded by residential properties in the 101 Zone District to the north and to the west, and by the seventh story of the La Quinta Hotel, which is now vacated to the east. The property is about 20 head acres, and it contains the two-story hotel, 44 rooms, and 45 parking spaces right now. The applicant is proposing, which I will jump to Exhibit A2, to add a third floor to the existing hotel. This will create an additional 21 rooms, bringing this whole count to 65 new rooms. The hotel currently has 45 parking spaces with 44 rooms. The additional parking spaces we are going to be adding, bringing the total to 68 of the 65 rooms, which exceeds the current rate of one space per unit, plus for manager, additional space. While the Borough does not have a particular parking room for hotels because we're causing a lot of community abuse in the Borough, industry standard for a hotel is one of its greatest criteria. And, again, based off of our review of the surrounding zones for, for basic municipalities , particularly in Delmar, the Arizona District required one space per year, or one space per room for a hotel. So, we are providing adequate parking in accordance with industry standards for hotels, and as Mr. Patel indicated, even during their natural occupancy in the summer of 95-plus percent occupancy rate, they still have sufficient parking. A lot of times they have guests that are coming from Philadelphia that are taking ride shares, or they're coming from the airport and they're heading over here and they don't have a car. And that's what they see, that there is a, a good portion of their guests, or have vehicles, and are driving here, or they're far from one of the people to, to get there. And we believe that the 68 spaces, again, fit 65 units, is sufficient, exceeds the current rate parking for the hotel, and we believe there will be sufficient for the proposed addition. Mr. Floyd indicated, the applicant would be agreeable to installing sidewalk on the entire frontage on 9th Avenue, and although you see it as pretty cool on the plan right here, could agree to remove the pool from the plan entirely, so that no longer would be part of the application. Based off the conversation we've had with the neighbors, we will be providing a, a hedgerow of landscaping where we have the additional parking spaces, so any headlights or any shine has these neighbors. There are some woods and large trees in that space now, creating the, the winter marks when the foliage is in there. We're going to install a four-foot-high hedgerow of landscaping at the end of those parking stalls to keep any headlights shine from affecting those neighbors. Besides that, it's a pretty straightforward application with, with the, that's site purpose, there's a couple additional parking spaces and the third floor addition, as well as the sidewalk, so it's pretty, pretty simple.
I see green on both sides, there hedgerow also on, I'm assuming that's the northern property line.
So, the green is just to, to mark where our limits of disturbance would be, so this would be grass. We're going to amend the plans to provide a hedgerow in there. There are no parking spaces that are going to be facing head-ons of this, the property or to the top of the plan, but we would be agreeable to install a hedgerow on that side as well to, or fence, solid fence to keep any type of glare, because these are parallel spaces.
So, there's also, and I, and, Madam Chair, so there's also turning movements, so even though there's no parking that is perpendicular, people are going to be turning through, and so the two thin green areas up to the corner, could you hedgerow both?
Yes.
To, to, and that would stop any glare from any of the adjacent residential property.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would just add, just in Mr. Bach's comments, that we are agreeable to add this hedgerows. And I had that conversation with Joseph Unico, who's one of the nearby neighbors, he is in the audience this evening. He had a concern about the maintenance of this hedgerows, pretty, but what happens if they die or get destroyed. But we would agree as a condition of any approval that, that is a specific condition positive use experience, so that there's a lot of obligation communicated, and it could be done in enforcement action. But I want to make that clear, that there was that concern, and we were, Mr. Unico to, to express it, and I thought that he had now completed him up for the comment.
I appreciate that, Mr. Floyd, thank you. Other, any other questions for this witness?
Madam Chair, question from the mayor. Has it been looked at for the turn radius with now adding the third story for average 75-foot fire truck to be able to turn, ladder truck, quick, to gain access?
The turn radius, the turn radius has not changed. The parking has existed in the front and in the back of the building. There is no change in the, the site improvements or circulation of the site. We're happy to see the plans to the Borough's issue of comment and-
Yes, my question is, when you first put in for the two-story, was it looked at a single apparatus compared to now, the high-rise of the third story for larger equipment to turn? That's the concern.
We have a specific plan to-
Mr. Boisozon, they already agreed to all the conditions or, or letter. We indicated that they have to get review from the fire subcode official of the Borough, and get their, to their satisfaction that it operates where they can operate.
Excellent, thank you.
Since you brought up the bushes, the, the drainage basin.
Yes.
That could be cleaned out and taken care of, I mean, thing-
So, there are, yeah, there's a couple of hard-to-find easements that are on this property, there's some apps that have depicted easements, and then we're having trouble finding the exact language of those easements that are between. If that basin, if the language in the easement permits the applicant to disturb or make any interference inside those basins, we will review that. We're not sure at this point what, that, whether that easement from the Borough, because there is drainage on 9th Avenue that crosses through the property here that heads, heads off-site, or it's something that was in the review letter that we need to provide a process of easements and our tire pumping, so we don't do that process.
And also, one of the conditions that you already agreed to in our review is that you're going to maintain that basin, because that services property.
Yes.
So, it's, we have no record of, as a municipality, that that is anyway owned or operated by the municipality, based on what was submitted here, and we'll look for your, your records, but somehow, as a condition of approval, that basin has to be maintained.
We, we would submit an operation maintenance manual-
Right, and they have, they would have to agree to clean up the basin.
Yes, whatever's not currently covered underneath, we will clean out, like, to remove from the basin that I would add.
Well, we keep, keep saying not covered on, under easement.
If, if we have-
The storm, the stormwater maintenance, somehow-
Yes.
The applicant, on a massive distance, looking at this, Floyd, somehow the applicant has agreed that one way or the other, this basin is going to be maintained as a condition of approval.
We will create the stormwater maintenance operation manual, and we also, that would be recorded in the Chan Edel, the clerk's office, and to the extent that we need to get any other rights to maintain the basin, we will reach out to those entities.
Thank you so much.
Yes, all right. What's the drive-in size, 25 foot?
24.
24 foot, okay. And the two segmented retaining walls, they're not going in now?
Those would be removed since the pool's out.
Okay, they, they were there, they were existing?
No, those are proposed, those would be-
Oh, those that are not going, okay.
They were needed to-
We have to answer my question.
-add five hundred going through the current location.
Kevin, do you have, how many handicaps spots do you have?
There are at least three.
There's three, right, Elton.
Right in the front, I mean, we can provide in accordance with the A.D.A. standards, maybe after all those bases, we will-
They need to pass the travel, they have to demonstrate that they're meeting with the state statute for the number, and they'll have to update any signage for their current, their current signage requirements.
Thank you.
And where's the 21 going, Kevin? New spots?
So, along the left-hand side of the drive aisle, there's a new one, you see there. It's actually familiar, which, the same, 14 spots. 14 spots, so we can't read it off this. So, 14 spaces will be located along the left-hand side of the drive aisle, three spaces will be added into the front, and then a series of parallel spaces will be added into that.
Steve, all that's good, right?
Yeah, yeah, I have no objection.
Any other questions for this witness?
Thank you, Mr. Shelley.
Thank you. Forgot our next witness, Michael Bush with Studio 43D.
And before you start, I'm going to answer one of the questions, the board member, this show is still here. One of the reasons that the parking spaces along the rear are parallel is there's a CC and away easement that did not be disturbed, so they're providing, based on the testimony, I approve the testimony, they're providing adequate parking for some other rooms, based on industry standards.
That don't affect the parking spots that are there now, that kind of back off.
Yeah, it's-
Michael, please state your full name and your qualifications for the record.
Sure, Michael Bush Jr., I'm the principal of Studio 43D. I've been a licensed architect in New Jersey since 2008. My registration is current, my firm registration is current, and I'm licensed in 46 states altogether.
Fantastic. Yes, you do. Welcome.
Thank you, Mike, you've heard a lot about already fact testimony and engineering testimony. Could you just walk us through your multiple sets for Exhibit 3, which are the floor plans and renderings and elevations?
So, I'll try to stick to the key things that haven't been covered so far. So, the existing first floor, there's a covered parking right here, so I'm going to talk about that and get a little bit further down. So, currently, you walk into the lobby and there's a gym here, and there's a current room, a conference room located in the back. We're proposing an elevator next to it, so you're going to see, that's what influenced a lot of those decisions that we lost, those rooms on the second floor. So, when I, when I get to the proposed plans, I could speak to that a little bit further. But currently, the second floor is all guest rooms with supporting spaces there. So, these are some photos of the current building that's there now. I have to wow rendering that again, so I'll get there when we get a little bit further along. So, that's the existing facade that's there now, with the existing parkway. So, for the proposed first floor plan, this is a blow-up of right here, so you're still going to be entering to the lobby, but what they're doing is they're moving the gym over to this side, and they're creating a breakfast area, which allows this elevator space, allows the lobby to get from the first floor to the other floors of the building. So, that, those are the only internal revisions that happened on the first floor. On the second floor, this is being extended out over the existing footprint of the first floor. So, this room that was here before is now being converted into a new conference room. So, that's one of the rules that we lost. And this existing room that was here previously, we're going to be using this room to get access to the elevator. So, those are the two big changes that got us down to 21. Okay, so- Okay, so the proposed third floor, um, this consists of all rooms up here and this also includes a manager apartment. So in the accounts that have been given previously, that's also the manager's apartment for the property. Okay, so those are the proposed uses for the third floor. So that's just another blow-up of that. So this is our proposed elevations. We're sticking with the, um, uh, the corporate brand and what their standards are, um, which are very light tone, you know, they're very soft colors. It's nothing too abrasive, you know, uh, we think we're fitting nicely with the context of the neighborhood and what's around it. So that's the proposed elevation. So the, there's an existing carport that's here, so we're just proposing to replace that with a, um, a metal shed roof that goes over it to just, you know, kind of get into the context of the building a little bit more with the more modern look. And then these are some renders that we proposed to give you an idea of what the, what the structure of it like when it was completed.
What is, what's your timeline for completion, Nina?
I do not know. That would depend on, uh, a lot of the owner's decision on when to start and materials, all those good things that are going on these days.
Any other questions for the witnesses? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bush.
One question. Uh, during construction, I would imagine the hotel will not be in operation when they're adding the third floor, or will it be in operation?
I'm sorry, I...
While the third floor is being constructed, will the hotel still be open or will have to be closed for safety?
Um, so, like, it, it block, like, parcel, like, uh, we can block the parcel area when they're constructed, and it's still open or not? I'm just, I'm just curious about that.
Well, I, I think, I think what we'll do is, at the time of construction, when, um, the contractor's working with the construction officials, depending on whether any portion of the hotel can remain open, other than we're in a position to make that, uh, determination right now.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Well, one thing I can speak to that, with that, is I know early discussions with this, we plan on basically building the third floor over the existing structure, so we're not going to be invasive of what's below it. We're just going to be building a superstructure over it and reinforcing, so we need to do that. That was our early conversations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last but not least, we are C C D to, uh, use variants for this evening, so Joe Mancini is our professional planner of record. Joe, you may ask.
You're excited about for sure, but...
Uh, your qualifications for record, please?
Joseph Mancini, uh, with, uh, Tri-C Engineering and Serving, a licensed professional engineer and planner in New Jersey, uh, testified with ordinary planning and voting boards, including this one, and qualified with an expert in that areas.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good to be back.
Joe, if you could just talk about the standard for a D-two use variants, they go into the various proofs, positive and negative criteria?
Sure. So as you heard, we're, we're in the S E D zone, which does not permit the hotel. Uh, the, our hotel's permitted in any zone in front of me, as far as I know. So we need a D-two variance for the expansion of this existing non-conform use. And the criteria on urban land use law for that, that is, we have to show that the positive criteria or the special reasons, uh, are demonstrated. Um, and in the absence of a use that is internally beneficial, typically we do that by demonstrating that the site's particularly suited to this use, which we believe it is. So do you hear testimony from the applicant about the, the need for this, uh, the vacant hotel next door, the strategic location, you know, turnpike, uh, and entire occupancy rate, had occupancy rate, all suggests that there's room for the hotel expansion, uh, which in my mind, uh, speaks to why it's particularly suited and, and thus proposed general welfare, uh, by, uh, addressing those needs. Um, that speaks specifically to purpose A, uh, promoting the public health, safety, morals, general welfare, uh, as well as purpose G of land use law, which provides for sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of users in order to be useful citizens. Uh, in doing so, we also still, uh, promote purpose C of statute, which talks about providing adequate light air and open space, um, in that we're providing additional parking spaces and amenities to service those additional, uh, rooms that will slightly comfortably accommodate that. We're not, uh, exceeding any other, uh, bulk standards for the zone. Obviously, we also promote for purpose N with the statute, which talks about more efficient use of land. I think that's self-evident. And then finally, uh, I believe we promote a desire of the visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement pursuant to purpose I of statute. And obviously, the other side of that coin is a negative criteria, where we have to demonstrate that there's no substantial detriment to the bulk of good going into the intent and purpose of your zoning plan. So looking at that, we believe the hotel expansion will generate, uh, minimal increase in traffic and lighting, noise, dust, odor, similar effect, uh, are all comparable to what we'd expect from, uh, other permitted uses. Uh, the site's suitably landscaped with the additions that we talked about tonight to minimize the impact of adjacent properties and to the public. Um, the existing and proposed uses compatible with the surrounding uses, this is an area that has hotels, so it's not even real with the neighborhood, uh, so therefore we don't see a detriment to the surrounding properties. Again, all the other aspects of the site comply with the bulk standards, so we don't have any other setback or coverage issues that generate with this expansion. Um, specifically, the two thousand seventeen master plan reexamination referenced among its goals, promoting redevelopment and retention of businesses, um, which I believe this proposed project, uh, represents. Uh, so for those reasons, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment that we could find that are probably good. I don't know, I see a substantial impairment in the intent and purpose of your zoning plan, and I find it be appropriate to grant the D-two variance.
Thank you, Joe.
Any questions for this witness? Peter Shemancini, thank you very much.
Mr. Sherwood, that ends our affirmative presentation, uh, depending on the nature of, uh, how it's on the public, you deserve a right to interest in this conversation.
I'm just going to, yes, in, in Steve's review letter, he mentions a possible waiver from, uh, section thirty-nine, uh, three-nine-five-fourteen regarding loading areas. Are you seeking that waiver this evening?
Yes, thank you. We are requesting a design waiver from providing a loading area. Uh, I'll ask, uh, Mr. Patel to come back up briefly.
Uh, Mr. Patel, we are requesting to make waiver for providing a specific loading area at the hotel. You currently do not have a loading area in the hotel. Correct. And when your deliveries come in, uh, maybe for some breakfast, foods, or laundry, is it normally done by a small box truck or a personal car?
Uh, usually they park, uh, side the door and then they take from that, like, from all along, like...
So, uh, with the current operation, forty-four rooms, there's no need for a loading pack, correct? And there's no need once you go to the additional twenty-three rooms, correct? Thanks.
Mr. Bush, if you can add to that, I, I didn't get the answer to the question. Are there tractor trailers making deliveries?
There's no tractor trailers making deliveries to your site, correct? No, like a FedEx, Al, small box truck?
No.
No tractor trailers?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sherwood, any last questions for professionals?
Uh, they've already agreed with all the, I can do this, it's a, a report plus a few, so I know there's nothing you didn't...
Okay, Mr. Rowan. We're going to open up the public, if you don't have anything to add to that. Okay, at this point, Tom, we're going to open the meeting up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this application only, come up to the front and state your name and address, please. Joe.
I want to thank the Bushes, oh, Joe Unico.
Yep.
I want to thank them for the Bushes, uh, for blocking. It was the best idea of us, thank you.
All right, Mr. Unico, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
See, no one else from the public wishing to speak on this matter?
Man, do you have other questions or comments?
Sure, of course. It's okay.
Uh, I'd like to have a question on the tractor trailers. Uh, no deliveries with them, but what if a tractor trailer wanted to stay overnight there? Do they have accommodations or like that? Because I mean, years ago, we had problems with them parking on the main street with different diesel runs.
How about the applicant answer?
I just checked with Mr. Patel, no, they don't have tractor trailers, um, staying the night there. Maybe we'd agree to the decision of approval, not have that.
Okay. Do you have Mr. Unico?
Yes.
If you can hear his response. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Okay, see, no one else from the public wishing to speak on this matter? I'm taking a motion to close the whole portion.
Seven.
Motion by Mr. Oakley, seconded by Mr. Missson, all in favor? Mr. Rowan?
Hey, this is an application regarding one-on-one East Ninth Avenue, Block Three-Fifteen, Lot Thirty-One, which lies in the S E P, uh, zone, our S E P zoning district. It's an application for preliminary and final site plan approval to allow the applicant to face the building by one story for a total of three, three floors, which will pro, provide for twenty-three additional, uh, new rooms at the location. Uh, the applicant has testified that he is agreeing to all the conditions and comments at fourth of Mr. Box's review letter dated January twentieth and will result, revise their plans accordingly. They are seeking a, um, a use variant since the motel, hotel is not a specifically designated use within that zone. The board has heard testimony, uh, from their planner. You can take that testimony into consideration in making a decision. You can also consider that there is in fact a hotel over residing there. This is an expansion of a, a, of a, of a non-conforming use, um, from whenever granted years ago. They're also asking for a waiver from our ordinance, three-nine-five dash fourteen regarding, uh, the requirement for the loading area to be provided where any building is in excess of five thousand square feet. They've given reasons why they believe that waiver, uh, should be granted. The, as, as we know, there is always, this is the time to make any conditions of any, any site, uh, final approval, and I believe the applicant has agreed on the following three conditions. If the board, uh, does grant approval, they will maintain all existing and proposed new landscaping, uh, areas at the area. They will also maintain, uh, the stormwater drainage basin. Regardless if there is an easement or not, they're, they're a primary beneficiary of that basin and that stormwater area, and so they have agreed to provide a plan to, to maintain that on a continuous basis. They're also agreeing that the question from the public and from the, the board that there will, um, regarding overnight parking of tractor trailers as a condition of the approval, of, of, of any approval, the applicant has agreed that there will be no overnight parking of tractor trailers, uh, at the site.
And no delivery from tractor?
And no deliveries from, from tractor trailer. And it was testimony that deliveries are just in the form of small box cars or, or, or vans. Um, the applicant has also agreed that they will include either the required side, sidewalk installation along the frontage of the property, um, so that would be apparently revised in the plan. The applicant has also put placed on the record that the proposed pool that was set forth on the previous application and plans that were submitted has been eliminated. And if they do intend in the future to install pool, they have to come back before this board, uh, with a formal plan and for our consideration.
They will also, additional, if I may, Mr. Slusser, they agreed on the north and west, uh, property lines adjacent residential to install four-foot-high, uh, year-round hedge.
And that's where I believe they agreed, uh...
Besides maintaining...
Nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, they're going to submit a landscape...
Right.
...plan, which will include those, those areas, the land, the...
Besides maintaining them, they're going to expand the, the parking and the landscaping floor.
Okay, and is that on the north, south, north and...
The north and the west.
North and west.
North and west property lines.
Right, correct. And the plans will be revised accordingly.
And then also, just for clarity, because it was brought up by Mr. Rozon, besides submission to the fire subcode official, you'll also submit to our, uh, fire department.
Correct.
For the turn radiuses of the...
And it's always, all our, all our resolution or approval are subject to, in condition upon you obtaining any other approvals from any local agencies, state or county, or any, any other public agency.
We could just include in the resolution besides what's in my letter, the actual fire department, because that was specific as to the quinn and the turning radius.
Uh, so, so will, uh...
That's not my letter.
Will obtain approval and comment from the local fire?
Yes, please.
Local fire authorities, okay. All right, good. That's what we need, we need a motion.
Okay, well, entertain a motion to, uh, to rescind it.
Were the sidewalks moved in there?
Yes.
Yep, yep, we had that in there.
I'll give a motion to approve this, this application for...
Second.
Look, Mr. Oakley, accepted by Mr. Vanel, ready to roll call, please?
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Uh, Mr. Oakley, accepted by Mr. Vanel.
Okay. Uh, Gerald McLean, however?
I would, yes, I, I really think that this is going to be a, a nice, uh, addition. Um, I appreciate them putting sidewalks in. I think it's going to be a, a benefit for all the folks that are staying there if they want to, again, as you said, the Uber and stuff, they're able to, you know, walk up to Wawa, get a sandwich or something. I think that's going to be an asset to the, the entire community back there, and, uh, I think architecturally, it's a, it's a very nice plan, so, um, I'm looking forward to it, so I go yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Ms. Kusian?
Yes.
Mr. Buckeye?
Yes.
Mr. Vanel?
Yes.
Ms. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozon?
Yes.
That's it.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Yes, my, sorry, I was delayed, yeah, I'm sorry, I hope guys, uh...
Fantastic. Thank you, thank you for just dropping everything.
Yes.
I heard it was repack though. I'm on this, yeah, I call.
Okay, so, just a recommendation of the, uh, the rest of the board, uh, we did have a workshop meeting, um, prior to the meeting, um, with, uh...
Congratulations.
...the construction officials, um, folks, uh, from Fox, uh, so he's just, this is here, um, we had, uh, Mr. Moore was here, and it was basically, you know, one of, you know, just possibly a few workshop meetings where we are going to try to resolve the, um, flow of things and how, um, we are, we're getting the CEOs out and how we're getting permits. When we're issuing things, when we're signing off on things, kind of like the, just basically the housekeeping of how we should run from the, from the application to the point of approval through the point of the CEO. So, Mr. Box, if you want to expand upon that, insert my name.
So, if you recall, a few months ago, uh, we were, we were tasked to set up a meeting with members of the planning board, member of council, uh, well, subcommittee of the planning board, subcommittee of council, uh, the zoning officer, the construction department, and the construction officials, who are very pleased, all attended, as well as our, our code enforcement officer, and as well as our chief. So it really was a good, uh, conversation as to, uh, statutorily, what is required by the law on how to operate, and then also providing some additional forms and checklists and, um, operational steps where it's clear at what point has an applicant applied with a planning board or a zoning board, depending on how the city, uh, approval, and at what point, uh, which goes through the zoning off, uh, official, and at what point is it appropriate for building permits to be issued, and then also the other checks and balances of when is appropriate for a CEO to be issued. Uh, and I will say that, uh, everyone was in general agreement, unless there's an extraordinary situation, temporary CEOs are not appropriate, and we're going to be, uh, working towards, uh, applicants complying with everything before they're able to occupy and operate. And I think, uh, this is our first step of this meeting. I think it was very well, very well received by everybody in attendance, and I think, uh, some of the additional forms and checklist that our office prepared for the borough, I think that will assist in this operation.
Yeah, I, I think it was good as well. It's going to try to give our officials a little more teeth, um, when something happens prematurely before it got in the permit or whatever, they're going to be able to go to that person and say, no, you have a timeout, we can't do that. You know, I, I appreciate all your time, and you guys come out here, and you go, you visit the sites, and you guys are all off here, and I, I appreciate your time, I truly do, and, uh, I want what we decide at these meetings to be upheld, not to be ignored. And I want what we decide at these meetings to be upheld, not to be ignored and not to be disparaged, and, you know, that's about what this meeting is about, is trying to get some procedures in place, like Mr. Box said, to try to assure that everything that is agreed upon by his board is in fact taken to task and done properly, or they're not going to get their CEO. We're not going to, you know, not going to mess around, basically. So, you know, if there's anything that you guys would like to be brought up at the next workshop meeting, just email it to me, I'll make sure it gets on the agenda. Like we haven't, we have not set a date for a second meeting, but if there's something that wants, that anyone here would like to be addressed at that meeting, by all means, email it to me, I'll be sure it's on the agenda, okay?
So, gentlemen, we got time, we got time to think about it, it's probably going to be a few months away, because we're going to let some of the things that were agreed to tonight implement and then go a follow-up, so we have some time before we need any of that. So that's free tomorrow.
Nope. So at this point in time, I'm going to open the meeting up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matter whatsoever, please come to the microphone, state your name and address and be heard.
See, no public wish to speak at this time, I make a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Oakley, seconded by Miss Dushin, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anyone opposed? All right, I will, at this point, at eight-twenty, I sent the books to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Make a motion by Mr. Oakley, seconded by Miss Dushin, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? In adjourn, thank you very much.